Hello and welcome to this special edition of Flap in Focus. On September 26, the voters of Ward 5 in Fitchburg will go to the polls to narrow down the field of three city council candidates down to two to replace outgoing city councillor Angelo Beazall. In this episode, special edition of Flap in Focus, two of those candidates join us to get to know you a little bit better, so you can know them a little bit better. We have Josiah Richards and Miguel Flatus. Thank you both for joining us today.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Very good. So we're going to start off just like we would in a standard interview if you're going for a job, right? The first question, tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about your background and why you're running. Josiah?
Certainly. Well, my name is Josiah Richards with an S.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I correct people a lot. Well, just to give you a little, voters, a little background about myself, I moved to Fitchburg in 2009. It's where I bought my first home. I have been working locally for the past seven years. Before that, I was committing to Nashua. I grew up in a small city, not much unlike Fitchburg. It's a post-industrial city with a lot of the similar economic issues, and I feel that some of those experiences I may bring to the table that are unique to small cities, and I can come with that sort of a background and experience and understanding of what a small city, the pains and successes that towns have. A little bit about my background a little further, I have a bachelor's degree in social work, and I have a master's degree in nonprofit business management. And I ran for office in 2011. I didn't win the position, but I did win the vote of 1,112 voters, and I hope that I can run again and serve the constituents of Ward 5 next year.
Excellent. Miguel?
Well, I came to Fitchburg in 2004 when I bought my first property with my family. Attended the Fitchburg State University, I got my bachelor's degree in communication science. I'm also, 13 years in the United States Navy, veteran, been deployed twice. And I ran for mayor a couple of years ago in order to bring the knowledge that I have obtained by being out in the world and seeing what good government can do for his people and what government, bad government, could also do for the people, which is basically pretty bad. I live right now on Ward 5 district, and I want to bring that knowledge to my constituents of Ward 5 to better the city and better our lives, have a type of quality of life that we, I believe, we deserve and that we need. So this is why it's important for me to run for Ward 5.
Very good. Josiah, can you tell us what you have done to be an engaged citizen of Fitchburg? How have you made a difference in our community?
Sure. So I've served the city already in a few capacities. I've been on the Fitchburg Energy and Environment Commission for four years. I've also been volunteering with the Fitchburg Farmers Market for about four years. I also serve on the United Neighbors of Fitchburg Board of Directors, and I've been doing that going on about five years. And I also serve with the Gateway Community Park Community Garden as the community garden organizer, and I've been doing that since the park's inception about seven years ago. And a little bit about what I think has given back to the community, I think is the second part of the question, is Gateway Park, as an example, the garden has served as a mechanism for residents in Riverside Commons and now the new Yarn Works to come together. I think over 20 gardeners have now, are now growing food for themselves in the community garden and have created a community around that garden. And I can't think of a better way to engage residents at a real local level, and I think that's a good example that I have to bring to the table.
Great. Miguel, same question to you. How have you been engaged in Fitchburg and what have you given to the community?
Well, I've been very engaged with the community in the last two years, not only because I ran for mayor of the city, but also in bringing up the issues of what's going on with the schools. I'm a big believer in special education, which is struggling right now. The teachers are struggling and students are struggling. I also do go around my community and volunteer myself to help anybody that needs help. Just recently, my neighbor wanted her entire porch painted, and I volunteered to paint her porch and other areas of cutting the grass that they need, they need to have someone do it or not. I don't have an impressive thing like him, but boy, you're very busy. I don't know how you will have time for her for everything. But I do believe in giving back to the community, and I do believe in working with residents and your local citizens to help each other and make a positive impact in the community. So my goal is to continue doing that.
All right. I could, I have a porch that could use to be painted.
Sure.
I mean, when I was on the city council and campaigning, I used to hand out pamphlets, but if you go around door-to-door painting people's porches, I'm thinking this could be a new, a new standard to set in the city, right?
It's good exercise.
It's a way to get votes, I would think, huh?
Yeah. It's good exercise.
All right. Let's give, let's give the next question, we'll let you go first on the next question. What would be your, what would be your top priority if you are elected Ward 5 councillor? And how would you go about addressing that priority?
Well, my top priority is actually Ward 5. I mean, Ward 5, the roads, the infrastructures, needs to be taken care of, has been abandoned for quite a while, it's falling apart. And we pay a lot of taxes and the property taxes, and it keeps going up, going up. We don't demand much, we just want better, you know, give us something back. We don't want much. Give us better roads, I don't want my vehicle, now I gotta do my engine mounts again and my stabilized links again. And also Unitil. Unitil is a big one. I know the talk of other people is, oh, there's nothing that can be done about Unitil. Well, if that's the attitude, then if I felt that there's nothing I can do in the Navy or run for school and just sit and not do anything about it, I never got anything done and gone forward. And crime is another one. We don't want to get up at 6:00 in the morning, have two state, one state police helicopter patrolling over our Ward 5 area because there was an early armed home invasion in the area. We need more police officers, we need to equip them, and the best way I think that we could do all that and accomplish that for school, infrastructure, and Unitil especially is, we need more businesses. We need to bring more economic growth in here and level the playing field. So businesses need money, money means money in your pocket, you spend, revenue for the city.
So you address several issues and priorities that you would have, you identified the problems. How would you, as the Ward 5 councillor, what specifically would you be doing to advocate and address those?
Well, first of all, I would push for conversation regarding Unitil. Let's talk about it, let's see what we can do. Let's come up with good heads here and talk about how can we, what can we do as representatives? The people had trusted us, voted for us to work for them, to do something for them, and we're not doing it. Every two years it comes up and then forgotten. Two years ago, it was the same thing. We got in front of Unitil, we told them, blah, 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 blah. They got elected, all of a sudden quiet for the next two years while Unitil's still increasing. So let's, you need somebody who's going to go in there and talk about it and not think that it's impossible to do so. And let's come up with some ideas to help all the citizens.
Good. Josiah, what would be your top priority as Ward 5 councillor, and how would you go about addressing it?
Well, Miguel brings up an awful lot of very good points, and I think they all deserve some merit, but one of the main concerns that I have heard while I've been door knocking is the roads, and I think Miguel also said that. While I was door knocking in several neighborhoods, actually Miguel's neighborhood, Klondike Street, Myrtle Ave, Pearl Street, Pearl Hill Road, they're all terrible roads, great for walking, bad for driving. In 2017, the city of Fitchburg received $1.1 million in Chapter 90 funding. That's only enough money to pave about four to five miles of road.
Less.
Yeah, or less, no, correct me if I'm wrong. The city council did approve $200,000 injection to help boost that $1.1 million. And just from 2015, the 2017 Chapter 90 funding was reduced by about a third. We have over 180 miles of road in Fitchburg that need continual repair. I will, I will work with the city, the city council and the mayor to address these issues, find areas in the budget where we can save money, trim the budget, save money, and really work towards paving some of these roads and doing it well. I understand there's different methods, I'm not a paver, but there's good ways, there's better ways and not so better ways, and we need to do it right the first time.
And for the viewers at home, Chapter 90 funds. Chapter 90 is, those are state funds that are dedicated to roads, bridges, from money raised from the gas tax, so.
Exactly.
Those go to, those are dispersed from the state to the cities and towns. Cities and towns don't fund Chapter 90 or decide how much is allocated.
No, no, and it's a reimbursement mechanism.
Right.
So I think the city pays upfront and then submits for reimbursement.
Correct.
If I can bring that up, I mean, look, two years ago, Josiah, I went to this area, this is a light poles, electrical wires post. I brought DPW, I brought people over there, and they say, well, we're going to handle it. This picture was taken two weeks ago, still there, exposed wires, nothing got done. So my point is, if we're going to go to the, to people and they're going to say, well, nothing we can be done, I'm not going to be the person to say, yes, sir, no. I will fight for my, for my, for my constituents and myself. I pay taxes and nothing is done. As far as road being done improper, look at this one. That's how it was left. Is that what I'm paying for, what the citizens are paying for? Sinkhole for. Tires, a family could blow up a tire right there. I mean, that's how it was, with the rains and everything. Now you got a sinkhole, sinkhole, and I can go on and on and on and on about everything. This is not a one-year, two-year thing, it's been for a long time. I came back in 2012 from the Middle East, and I see my community get more destroyed, destroyed, destroyed. No, we need, we need to fight, we need to fight.
So there's been talk about, about putting a ballot measure in front of the voters of Fitchburg with a question of a debt exclusion, which would be a property tax increase on top of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so it would be a temporary debt exclusion increase that is dedicated to road repairs. And the thought process there is really, most of the city budget, about all of the city budget, is pretty much non-discretionary expenditures. It's required by the state in school funding, contracts, health insurance, pension liability. So if you're going to spend money on roads and bridges and really catch up, it's going to take a debt exclusion, which will be put before the voters. As a member of the city council, would you vote yes or no to put a ballot measure before the voters to increase property taxes beyond Proposition 2 and 1/2 to fund roads and bridges? Miguel?
I would not.
Okay.
And my reason for is, we already paying a lot of taxes, and where's the money been going to? What's next? Government's going to come and ask us to do our own patching in the roads? They are not, they're not going the right direction. The taxes have increased in Fitchburg so much on commercial and on property owners, and I'm, like Josiah, I own two properties. And nothing is being done. Like I said, this is not from yesterday or two days ago, this has been a while. You've got companies coming in, and this company opening holes, and we're not holding them responsible. Why can't they? We hold them responsible to make sure that they do the proper repair once they do it. That's one of them right there.
So if we don't have.
I would not vote.
So if we don't have control over the Chapter 90 funds, and you're not willing to support a ballot initiative for a debt exclusion, the money's going to have to come somewhere in the budget. So when budget time comes around, as you know, you can't, city council cannot add to the budget, you can only cut from the budget. So city councillors can make motions to cut specific line items from the budget and then recommend that it be placed somewhere else. So where specifically do you believe cuts could be made in the, in the city of Fitchburg's budget?
I don't know yet where we can make cuts, that's something that I will review. However, let's, let's open the city. Two years ago, I said it, let's open the city and welcome businesses to come in. First of all, businesses don't want to commit because of Unitil. Second, the tax is high. Lomester's doing very good. I mean, I drive to Lomester almost every day, and I see businesses popping up here and there, and they're getting money, they're getting revenue. So let's, let's bring businesses. Let's revise, revive Fitchburg with, you know, just moving the, whatever, the family dollar across the street, that's not really creating businesses, just moving, NCVS moving. But it hasn't been done. Matter of fact, the tax has stayed up, so nobody's coming. And when they go to City Hall, from what I've heard, is that the, to get the permits and to do everything is so consuming, so hard, so they give them a hard time, that they decide not to do it, and they go to Lomester and they get a red carpet treatment. Those are the areas that, look, businesses mean jobs for the people, jobs for the people who mean money in the pocket, money they spend, revenue for the city. Going up hasn't helped, and it's still showing to have helped.
Josiah, should a debt exclusion measure be put on the ballot and give voters a chance to decide on infusing, infusing some money into roads?
Well, this might be an area where I might deviate from my colleague at the table here. As a city councillor, I have a duty to represent the residents of the whole city, especially Ward 5. I trust the voters. I would approve of a ballot initiative question to go forward to the voters. Whether or not I personally support increase in taxes is not my decision. I believe the vote, that it should be a decision made by the voters. I may get flack for that, but I would like to, if there's about a debt exclusion, sorry, I'm getting terminology wrong, a debt exclusion override to go beyond the 2 and 1/2 percent and raise taxes temporarily for a specific purpose such as roads, I think that should be a decision made by the voters who are paying the taxes. I say this, I would also add that I would work hard with anybody with a fixed income and who is eligible though to file for any tax abatements, because certainly there's a segment of our city's population that have fixed incomes who are not making more money and for whom this would be a tax burden. So I would work as your Ward councillor to make sure you get the resources that you need to file those abatements, if you qualify, of course.
If I may follow up on that quickly, I did a study of the city of Norton, Massachusetts, which they tried to go that way, no other city has tried. You know, it is not a five-years or less tax. You said earlier, Josiah, there's about 100 and something miles of roads that needs to get done. We're talking 10, 15, up to potentially 20 years of that tax. Now, the voters trust in us to go over there and also make decisions for them, and that's why I said that I would not vote for it. However, if the voters come to me and they feel that they should vote for it, yeah, I will go for it, but as right now, everybody that I've spoken to said, nope, they don't want it. Matter of fact, it would be a waste of their time going to the, to the poll because they don't want it. They don't even want to even talk about it. They already are upset that they pay enough taxes and nothing's being done.
Anything else on this, on the road issue? I know, because I know both of you, when you're walking door-to-door, this is probably the issue you're hearing about, right?
Yeah, it is tough. And I hear, you know, I'm nodding to Miguel because I agree to her, people do not want to pay more. I think my, the piece I'm taking away from all this, from the debt exclusion, is it's a voter initiative. I don't know that the city council needs to stop it. However, if I hear from enough constituents who say, don't put it forward, don't. But I, as a voter, I would appreciate it going to ballot, but that's my opinion.
Very good. So that's okay, that's what differences, you know, people have differences, that's what elections are about, right?
That is great.
I think you both did a great job representing your respective positions on that.
Thank you.
So let's move on to another issue that is, that's causing quite the debate in the city of Fitchburg, and that is one-lane Main Street. So we've had it for a while now, right? We've had the two lanes for many, many years, and now we've had the one lane, what's it been, about a year or so that we've had the?
Just about a year.
Just about a year for the one-lane Main, and now I know there was a, there was a story in the newspaper that, that there's going to be a survey going out to all the local businesses on how that's working out. So how, we'll start with you on this one, Josiah. What are your observations? How do you think one-lane Main is working out for the city?
I think the one-lane Main Street has made it safer for pedestrians. I think that has been at the core of this initiative from its beginning. The two lanes can move very quickly during peak hours or off-peak hours. I work downtown, I enjoy walking downtown occasionally, I go to some of the local businesses, and I've heard from a few local businesses and other commuters who walk, not everyone drives, that they appreciate it being down to one lane. Does that solve all the problems? No. And I think that the one lane is a step in the right direction of trying to create an environment that's conducive to small businesses, and I think some, some businesses are embracing the lane drop and using a bit more of the curb to improve their curb appeal. And does it need any changes? Perhaps. I'm, I'm open to suggestions, real suggestions, both from constituents and the city council to explore other options. You know, maybe we improve the signage, and I think the mayor has even indicated using boulder drive as a bypass, whether that's a two-way, two-directional bypass or another one-way that goes the opposite way, I don't know, I'm not a traffic engineer. But I think that's something the city can certainly consider, and I would be open to that as a city councillor.
Miguel, one-lane Main Street, yea or nay?
Oh, definitely a nay. Definitely, two years ago, I said it. You are putting the carriage in front of the horse. You are closing the area where if you do get businesses and little individuals parking an emergency vehicle in the snow blizzard. Look, the other day, I was at the, at a business there in the corner, I know the gentleman. Not only did he had to call the ambulance and the police to attend to an issue, but the ambulance and the police backed up traffic for about 20 minutes because traffic couldn't even go in the other place. So everybody that I know, instead of helping even the businesses that are there, they're avoiding the area. So that's not even helping that area because they're avoiding the area. And basically, in the last two years, I see the same empty shops till empty. Let's open it back to two lanes, let's put better, if you want to talk about safety, speed bumps. I saw that in Florida, when I went to Florida to a nice little city, they had a nice two-lane, but they had a speed bump. People had to slow down so the pedestrian can cross, doesn't cost a lot of money, but we leave it open so then emergency vehicles can go through in case of some other issues. And if emergency vehicles cannot go through, that's a risk, safety risk for another area, somebody. So it's definitely a no for me, and I've always been against it. And matter of fact, if I would have been elected mayor, I would have, I would have taken it out completely.
So if we go back to two lanes, we lose the bike lane. Has the bike lane been a positive or negative or a non-issue, do you think?
We have not seen anybody, I have not seen anybody riding a bike through there. I have spent time there and I've not seen, we're not yet like Newton, we're not yet like Cambridge. We're trying to be like them, and I agree. But look, look, my brother's an architect engineer, I believe, don't call me on it because I could be wrong, the architect, but my brother brought a good point. The way, the best way to do things is bicycle on this, on this area, sidewalks and vehicles. It does, he has seen accidents, he's an MBTA driver's in Boston. He has seen accidents where the bicycle drivers come in, opening the door, they try to avoid that door, bam, get hit by a car. That's not even safety. That's putting the people at risk.
I think they use, don't they use the flower boxes as that, as that?
Well, they got the flower boxes, and then they got the bike lane.
Right.
Why don't we move the flower boxes over here and put the bikes in this way? See, there's a few things, but we can even move it further, and let's have the two lanes and put the speed bumps, cheaper than what potentially they spend, but if they do go back to two lanes, now we wasted money on making it one lane for, and then we got to spend money again to bank it back to, waste of money.
Josiah, you work downtown, right?
Yes.
You do, what, in conversations you've had with business owners, with, with people who frequent downtown, what are, what are you hearing?
I'm hearing generally that they feel safer when they cross the street, it's easier to get in and out of your car. I know one of the issues has been parking on Main Street. The original plans for the one lane was to actually put in angled parking, which would, I think would have nearly doubled the spaces, but I think some people are concerned about people backing in. So we did lose a couple of parallel parking spaces on the left, but on the right, most of the spaces were maintained, but there was an added three-foot buffer. So after you've parallel parked, for those of us who can, you can get out of your car safely without looking for oncoming vehicle. You should always look, but you do have a three-foot buffer. And as far as the bike lane and the flower boxes, they kind of do serve as a, the flower boxes do serve as a bit of a buffer between the traffic and the cycling traffic. I do see cyclists using downtown occasionally. I'll admit, it's not heavily used. The connectivity of our roads with bicycle traffic is not that great. As somebody who lives with a cyclist, I think it's great to see these infrastructural changes being made, and I think all, all forms of traffic should have access to the roads, whether it's bicycling, cars, or pedestrians, and that's what all these infrastructure changes are for. And one thing I might point out, that some of the infrastructure changes have already been made, such as bumping out the crosswalk at the curbs, at the intersections, they bumped out the sidewalks to make it a little easier for people crossing, that when you stand at the light, traffic should see you better. And that's at Putnam and Main. And they also did that, I think, at the top of Cushing.
Miguel, anything to add on this?
Well, I mean, you know, the traffic is safer there because people are avoiding the area. You were in my area, in my district, my neighborhood, and I believe one of my neighbors stated that, you know, downtown really doesn't need, they avoid downtown. So, look, let's, let's, let's do a study on it, a real good study on it. There was some money that was put in to make it, like you said, Diana Park and everything, but I know that that didn't cost, whatever happened there didn't cost whatever money we had, the rest of the money, I have no idea. But let's do a study to see how in the future, if you do get a lot of businesses there in traffic, how's it going to work? Delivery vehicles, emergency vehicle, people parking, pedestrians, we haven't done the study, really thorough study. Like I said, when you put the carriage in front of the horse.
Okay. So, real short and sweet, keep it to about a minute. On September 26, the voters of Ward 5 are going to go to the intermodal station and vote for their next city councillor, and the field will be narrowed from three down to two. Why should a voter walk in and, and circle in that oval next to the name of Miguel Flatus?
I'm here to fight for them. They're fed up with a lot of stuff that I'm also fed up. You want your roads to be taken care, I will fight for that. You want Unitil to be brought up into the city council, I will bring that up. I am not going to be a gentleman, yes, in the military, I answer, yes, sir, no, sir, but that's not who is going to be me, I'm not going to be that one. I don't, I don't kiss up to the elites or the establishment. I don't do none of that. My concern is the people of Ward 5, and I will be their voice as a city council. And if they agree with me on that, then they should vote for me.
Very good. Josiah Richards, why you?
Why me? Well, I hope that my resume spoke for itself. I've been fairly civically engaged the nine years I've lived in Fitchburg. I would like to put my energies into a different vehicle and represent Ward 5 residents at City Hall, and I count on your vote September 26 and then again in November 7.
Very good. Josiah Richards, Miguel Flatus, thank you so much for agreeing to appear today so the voters of Ward 5 can get to know both of you a little bit better. I know you're both out knocking on doors every day, meeting voters, but this is yet another medium to be able to connect with voters, and I thank you very much for joining us here on Fitchburg Lemon. Already, we are the area's largest Facebook group dedicated to political discussion. I'm Kevin Cormier, thank you for joining us. I'm Kevin Cormier, thank you for joining us. Goodbye.